Let's come to order.
Without a student trustee?
Yes.
Do you want to hold those till Tom's here?
Then...
Do you want to hold those resolutions till Tom is back?
Okay.
So I'll just do actions taken in closed session.
All right, let's come to order and welcome to the August meeting of the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District. We are a little depleted up here tonight. Trustee Fuentes is in the hospital finishing up with the last stage of the liver transplant. We expect him back with us next month. He sends his regards and his regrets. And also trustee Lee will not be with us tonight. She is recovering from what are thankfully the minor results of a traffic accident. So we will see both of them next week. Nevertheless, diminished in number are undaunted in spirit and will soldier on. To that end, let me turn to the Vice President of the Board to read out the items taken in closed, actions taken in closed session.
Yes. On a six to zero vote with trustee Fuentes absent, the Board approved to rescind three months of unpaid leave which had been granted to a classified employee. On a six to zero vote with trustee Fuentes absent, the Board approved unpaid leave for a classified employee from September 15th of 2008 to January 9th, 2009. And with trustee Fuentes absent, on a four to two vote with trustees Padberg and Milchuk are casting negative votes, the Board approved to rescind dismissal action for a faculty member from July 17, 2007 so that the employment status will terminate.
Thank you, sir. And a word to the audience, we had one resolution for presentation tonight and the recipient could not be with us. And so we will put that one over until next, till next month. At this point, I invite you all to stand for an invocation, which I have the honor of leading, and then that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by trustee John Williams. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together in fellowship tonight. We ask that you guide our decisions, touch our hearts, and make sure that everything we do is for the benefit of our students and the community members who have entrusted us with the obligations that we carry out tonight. Thank you for this opportunity to come together. Thank you for this opportunity to serve our constituents and to serve you. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. With no resolution to do, we will turn to public comments. And I have one request to speak, Professor Carla Westfall.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to address item 6.3 on the agenda, the inclusion of invocations at board meetings and district functions. In May, you received a letter from the legal staff of Americans United for Separation of Church and State challenging your practice of including invocations at three different events: the annual scholarship ceremony, the chancellor's opening session at In Service, and commencement. Upon receiving this letter, your lawyers requested time to review the case law. As of this morning, your lawyers had still not gotten back to them with the promised reply. I understand that the chancellor has informed you that the district lawyers do state that beginning your board meetings with prayer is legal. Unfortunately, even I admit that it may be. Legislative prayer is a big exception to the general prohibition against public prayer. However, the fact that something may be legal doesn't make it appropriate. Further, the possible legality of legislative prayer does not extend to prayer in other settings. Some very legitimate concerns were raised in the letter from Americans United, all of which were backed up with a number of legal precedents. So tonight, I'm asking you not to approve the use of invocations at school or district events for three reasons. One, it is inappropriate and disrespectful to those who don't share your faith as well as to those who do share your faith but are uncomfortable imposing their religious beliefs on others. In short, I'm asking you to do the right thing because it is right. Two, you have been formally asked by the faculty of both colleges and the students of Saddleback to cease this practice. Your continued inclusion of invocations at school events is disrespectful to these people. Further, it's an example of your inappropriate involvement in non-policy matters, precisely what the accreditation team asked you to cease in recommendation five of their report. Three, it is quite likely unconstitutional, especially at the three events addressed in the letter from Americans United. It would be imprudent to approve the continued practice of prayer at district events until your lawyers have conducted the thorough review of case law, which they said they would do last May. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this point, we will ask Board members for their reports. And as usual, start with trustee Jay.
Thank you, President Wagner. I'd like to just mention a couple things. A few days ago, I heard that IVC was up 21% this fall and that Saddleback was up 15. Well, of course, after school began, those numbers went down a little. I'm told now that IVC is down to only 15 and Saddleback's around 7.5. But anyway, I want to spread kudos all around to the people who push so hard to increase enrollments. And that includes not only the instructional staff themselves, of course, which students are responding to primarily, but the wonderful job of promotion that's been done resulting in those enrollment figures. And I'm very pleased to see that. Secondly, I'd like to mention the final budget. We're going to have budget hearings tonight, so we'll get, I'll get a shot at it. But just two things I'd like to mention. COPS is paid for now. That's an outstanding debt that we've had in this district for years and years. And as of June, we paid off the last few million dollars. And lastly, we're one of the few districts in the state, possibly, I don't know, Gary, you could confirm this or not, maybe the only one, but surely one of very few, that has met all of the past service obligations the district has. And we have that, it's account 72, I believe, in a trust, Gary, isn't that correct now? And that's wonderful because not to have that $51 million liability hanging over our heads is incredible. So kudos to the financial people, Gary, and Beth and Carol and all of the rest of you who are involved in it. Thank you.
Trustee Padberg.
Yes, I just would like to say that I have been active with district affairs, that I'm currently leading one of the Saddleback College Foundation pushes, the last push to increase our donations to the Veterans Memorial. Each person can get a brick with their name on it for a mere $100. So see me afterwards and I'll sign you up. And we are very proud of that. We've gotten tremendous contributions from the communities, the cities around us, but we want individuals to have their name. It reminds me very much of our walk that was just, we have bricks that we've sold on the stairs coming up from the parking lot. And that's very, but I think it's important to have our faculty, our employees, our CSAT people, all of our people contribute to that, to support our veterans. I have attended the kickoff of the football season for Saddleback, the last, actually, I think it was last Wednesday, and it was great. We had plenty of parents there and we're looking forward to a good season. So IVC has had a great season. We've had a marvelous experience with Misty May, our instructor there with the Olympics, and very supportive of all of our athletics, which helps build character and keep our students focused. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Williams.
Yes, I had the pleasure of attending the chancellor's opening session last Tuesday. And I wanted to thank Dr. Mather and staff, Grace Garcia, Robina, for doing a wonderful job, President Glenn Rockmore, IVC staff, for doing a wonderful job in hosting the event. Scott Lay, the Executive Director of the Community College League spoke, one of the best speakers we've had. The Faculty Association luncheon, thank you again, Lee, for, and the Association for hosting another great luncheon. Very informative session. I understand everything went on all week, a lot of hours put in by faculty and staff. One of the highlights was seeing about 38 of 40 new faculty on stage being introduced, brand-new faculty with our administrators, the new president, the new vice chancellors. Overall, a great event. I give it an A+. Thank you.
I'll second that on the chancellor's opening and also had an opportunity to attend at IVC, the Accreditation Focus Group Report to the campus. And so appreciate the opportunity to participate in that as well. So that's my report. And trustee Milchuk.
I third that. I was able to have the opportunity to attend the chancellor's opening session to the beginning of In Service, and it was a very good day. And it was wonderful to see all our new faculty member and all our new administrators on stage. And it was well done, and I hope to get to know a lot of the new administrators and faculty in the upcoming year. I also had an opportunity to attend a number of the In Service events. And I just have to mention two of the highlights. One is, was by Kristy Brenner, who happens to be the president of an organization that I'm a member of, the Brahmiad Society. And she talked about her sabbatical where she did some studies in Venezuela. And she studied Brahmiads, and she studied other flora and fauna and the culture there. And she's bringing this back, and she will do a sabbatical report. And I'm hoping that some of the faculty will be able to come to the board meeting and give us some of their sabbatical reports and tell us what they learned. This was just a fascinating discussion that anyone would be interested in. I also attended Professor Jeanne Agos, who gave a wonderful discussion about the beginning of human language. And she's actually going to be teaching, putting together a course on linguistics in the future that will be taught. And it talked about the languages that are actually becoming extinct and why, and the origin of languages. And they were just fascinating, and they were attended by a number of faculty. And our faculty do really good things. And I think it's really wonderful to see the things that they're doing and to hear them firsthand and to hear the excitement that they bring back from their sabbatical studies to bring back to the classroom. I also wanted to mention that today is Women's Equality Day. Today is the 88th anniversary of the 1920 passage of the 19th Amendment, when the women were given the right to vote. And so this is a very big day, and I think we should all honor all the women that work so hard to give the women the right to vote by voting. When it comes, when November comes around, we should all vote, and we should appreciate the freedoms that we have and that we can all vote and all the groups are able to vote in this country. And I'm very proud of that. And we should vote because of all the work, all of us, so many people have done to bring the vote to so many people.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Thank you, trustee Wagner. As noted previously in my report, I continued to participate with a group of very dedicated individuals representing Saddleback College to address the visiting accreditation team's recommendations. And just wanted to acknowledge some of the people I think that the institution is indebted to that serve on that committee, including Carmen Dominguez, who is chairing that group, ably assisted by Mary Williams. And also on that committee are Bob Cosgrove, Rajan Verdian, Don Boucher, Jim Wright, Lee Hagerty, Carol Hilton, Brittany Holmes, Patricia Lucas, Morgan Barrows, and Nancy Basette. And hopefully I haven't missed anybody there. Good progress is being made. It's a very engaged group and very concerned, obviously, about the college. I want to express my heartfelt wishes for a speedy recovery from surgery to our colleague, trustee Tom Fuentes, as well as our student trustee Hannah Lee. I also want to congratulate the chancellor for a successful and enjoyable opening session and to both college presidents on what I think has been a great kickoff to a new academic year. I was also able to enjoy the interesting class that trustee Milchuk described that was led by Gina Agos. Special kudos also to Teddy Lorch and the entire Personnel Department for their yeoman's effort in processing all of the new hires for this academic year. I think we've attracted some just outstanding talent at all levels, including, of course, our new vice presidents, Bob Bermuda and David Bouguet. And of course, not to leave out our new Saddleback College president, Todd Burnett. And finally, I think I failed to mention last month with trustee Fuentes and Williams announcements that I've also opted to seek reelection in November for my seat on the Board. Thank you.
Thank you. And chancellor's report.
Thank you, President Wagner. First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Dr. Todd Burnett, president of Saddleback College, to his first meeting of the Board of Trustees, along with Dr. Bob Bermuda, the new Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services, and Dr. David Bouguet, Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, along with some 40 faculty members, full-time faculty members who have been hired with great assistance from the wonderful, wonderful HR staff in the district. Secondly, I'd like to thank the presidents and all the folks, including the faculty coordinators of the In Service Week on both college campuses. There have been wonderful activities occurring, and all the presenters and the attendees are commended for their participation. Thirdly, with respect to the enrollment, as trustee Jay mentioned, at this point, district-wide, the enrollment is up in terms of not only the head count but also full-time equivalent students by about 10%. The numbers fluctuate a couple of weeks prior to the beginning of the semester as well as a couple of weeks into the new semester. So, but overall, the news is good that we have more students, parking lots are full, and the classes are engaged with these students. As far as the ATEP, the Advanced Technology and Education Park campus is concerned, last fall, ATEP campus had an enrollment of about 400 students. Last spring, about 500. In summer, with fewer offerings, 600 students. And this semester, the enrollment is approaching 800 students. So we have grown tremendously just within one year. It shows that the demand is there. Finally, I'd like to report some good news on the 50%, as if all others have not been. They all have been wonderful news, but here is a really special news item. We have done the calculations with the assistance of the Deputy Chancellor Gary Porter and District Director of Business Services, Beth Muller, and others on the college campuses about the 50% law calculations for the last year. And I'm pleased to report that the number that we have for last year is 51.36%, is above 50%. And this is, I understand, Gary, that without including the, hopefully soon to be concluded contract with the faculty negoti, as part of the faculty negotiations, without even including that money being counted towards it, we are already at 51.36%, subject to verification by our auditors. And with the hiring of some 38, 40 new full-time faculty members into this year, I think our numbers will only look better for the future. So congratulations to all for working together on this project, especially the college presidents and ATEP staff for pulling together on a plan that I'd asked for, and we have followed that plan to make sure that we come out well and it looks good. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this point, we'll turn to Board requests for report. Trustee Williams.
Well, it's been a long time since I've requested a report. My report I submitted to the chancellor has to do with alternative energy use. And for those of you at the opening session on Tuesday, I did submit this report before the one speaker from Butte College talked about her college using solar energy. I'm not sure if they do anything with wind, but they do a lot of things to be a green campus. My report specifically addresses solar and wind farms and any other technology that may be available that we're just not utilizing. I didn't want to labor the staff too much and ask for this like in a month, but I think we need to look at what we're doing now, whether or not we're using, say, solar panels. I think at Saddleback College, there may be some. But what we can do to improve and utilize, you know, a natural resource, we have been a sunbelt area, the sun and the wind, and any other ways of alternative energy use. So it may be a two- or three-month project or have staff report back and maybe recommend we have a consultant, whatever, but I think we need to look at this.
And that one was submitted in writing and made the agenda for today, so let's go ahead and vote on accepting that one and getting administration going on that one. There we go, and two absences, that carries unanimously. Trustee Padberg.
Yes, I submitted two requests. I'm sure they'll say it was not timely, therefore it didn't get on the agenda. But the two requests that I'd like to see are, one, a report on all district and college expenditures on behalf of individual trustees, and the total for all trustees, including travel, event attendance, fees and food, fax line costs, phone line costs, email costs, benefit costs, food, car rental, shuttle taxis, and the monthly stipend. This, I think, is important, especially in an election season, that the voters who are electing people to be the trust keepers of their tax dollars know exactly what it's costing them. So I'm sure this will make it back for voting on the next meeting, and then we'll be able to hear this right before the election, which is so important. Then the next report is on the 50% law, which the chancellor has given us a brief report on. But I'd like to see how we got to 51% when we, in fact, were below 50%. So the consultant and massaging of the figures, I think, needs to be a full agenda item, full-blown for full public disclosure. So I'd like a full 50% law review and have that placed on the agenda.
And both of those have been received in writing?
That is correct.
Okay.
And they'll be on the agenda next month.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Further requests for reports? Seeing none, let's move on. We're at item four, which is our discussion topic for the evening, and this is a report on online and certificate programs. And let me turn it over to the chancellor to introduce it as folks make their way to the podium.
Thank you, President Wagner. The discussion topic for this month, as you noted, is the online degree and certificate programs. We'd like to report to the Board as to where we are with respect to this particular item in our growth and development. As you know, we have continued to put increased emphasis on online education in the last few years, so much so that roughly 12% or so of the FTEs is generated due to online courses. The national average, I believe, is about 20% or so. We have been offering courses online, and now we would like to move on to the next phase of it, which is offering online certificate and degree programs. I know that both the colleges have been engaged in this, and they are making progress, and more needs to be done in this area, especially with the guidance and assistance from our new Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services, Dr. Bob Bermuda. So I'll turn it over to him for some introductory comments, and then he'll introduce the two presenters from the Saddleback and Irvine Valley. And let me also mention that we look forward to offering online classes, particularly in high-tech areas, programs at ATEP. Dr. Bermuda.
Thank you. Good evening. Since the inception of online web-based distance education in the mid-1990s, it has experienced a rapid rate of growth, and this growth is manifest at the national, state, and local levels. Perhaps the best-regarded national survey comes from the Alfred P. Sloan Foundation via the Sloan Consortium. Over 2,500 American institutions of higher education, ranging from community colleges through doctoral granting institutions, participated in this survey. The latest one came out in 2007 and regards to the fall 2006 term. In fall 2006, nearly 3.5 million students in American higher education took at least one online class. Now, there's about 17.5 million students in American higher education. So that is about 20% of all students took at least one online class. Two-thirds of institutions now offer online courses, and about 35% offer online programs. It's telling to look at for 2005 to 2006, the fall semesters, what the growth rates were for, one, all of American higher education, and, two, just for online classes. The growth rate for all higher education is 1.5%. The growth rate for online education was about 9.7%. At the state level, the chancellor's office puts out a distance ed report every two years. The latest one came out in 2007. And I wanted to pick one measure I thought showed you very visually what the long-term performance of distance ed has been in the California community colleges. This graph goes back to the first year they started to collect MIS data on distance education, 1995 to 1996. In the 11-year period covered by this report, distance education in the California community colleges grew 808%. The average amount of growth per year was over 20%. The percentage of total student head count that as of the period covered by this report that is attributable to distance education is 12%. And relevant to our purpose this evening, the California community colleges that reported having online certificates and/or degrees are 21, and that's 19% of the colleges. At the local level, looking at the entire district, in 2003 and '04, 3.5% of the FTEs was due to distance education. In 2007-'08, it's up to 13.1%. And to go into that in more detail and break it down by college, we have with us this evening Dr. Rajan Verdian and Dr. Craig Justice. So I will turn it over first.
Rajan. Board President Wagner, members of the Board of Trustees, chancellor Mather, distinguished guests, good evening. It's indeed a pleasure to address you tonight on the subject of online and distance education at Saddleback College. As Vice Chancellor Bermuda just pointed out, the growth in distance education in the district has been phenomenal over the past five years. If we just look at the statistics at Saddleback College, in 2003, we had 40 sections. Spring 2008, 210 sections on online education. Head count of 2,358 in 2003, spring 2003. Spring 2008, 8,117. FTEs generated 238 in 2003, and spring 2008, 823. That's about 375% growth over the period of five years. Now, if you look at the fall, we are looking at fall 2008. We don't have all the numbers in. We are offering, in fall 2003, we have 49 courses only online, sections online. That's 2% of all the offerings. In the fall of 2008, we have 276 sections online. That's 11% of our offerings are online. And the number of courses that we have online, in fall 2003, we had only 40 courses. In the fall of 2008, we have 130 courses that are being offered that are online. But if you look at the number of courses that Saddleback College has, Saddleback College has 1,390 courses that we offer over the years. Out of those 1,390 courses, 233 can be taken online. That's about 20% of all our courses can be taken online. Let's take a look at the current online programs that we have at Saddleback College. In real estate, we have three complete areas that can be obtained online. Appraisal, escrow, and sales broker certificates can be earned entirely online. In the field of business, business leadership, marketing, international business, professional retailing, retail management, small business management can all be earned entirely online. They do not have to come to Saddleback College at all. In child development and educational studies, we have four, or five certificates that can be obtained entirely online. And we currently have students that are even out of state that are taking the certificates from us. Early childhood, educational assistant that relates to school-age children and youth certificate. certificate, master teacher certificate in early childhood, infant toddler teacher certificate, and associate teacher occupational skills can all be earned entirely online without the students ever having to come to Saddleback College. Let's take a look now at the complete associate degree. As you may be aware, there are three patterns to obtaining an associate degree. The first one is what we call the general education core requirements that go with an AA degree that is non-transferable. The students would come, they would earn an AA, and that would probably be the end of their career in the short term, and later on they may perhaps go back and earn a bachelor's degree. For those students, we have four areas, what we call the core requirements, and those core requirements can be taken entirely online. They include language and rationality, mathematics competency, reading competency, and information competency, and all those can be obtained entirely online. And as far as the breadth requirements that are available, we see distance education here because this, online is not the only, if you will, method, medium of instruction. You also have some television courses and some radio courses that fall within that category. So for those AA degrees that would not be transferable, you also have fine arts and humanities, you have a whole collection of courses that we do offer online. The natural sciences here do not include a lab because we have a little bit of a difficulty of offering all labs entirely online. The reason being that although we have articulation with the CSU systems and the UC systems and many private universities, those universities are now questioning the transfer of natural sciences courses that have a lab taken online and are inquiring about those labs, whether those labs are online or not. And in order not to jeopardize the articulation of those courses, we currently don't have the lab for those courses. Cultural diversity can be earned entirely online, social behavioral sciences, we have all the offerings online, life skills, critical thinking entirely online. And when it comes now to the second pattern, the pattern that deals with the CSU transfer, again, we have all those areas, communication, critical thinking, arts and humanities, social and behavioral sciences, life skills entirely online. But when it comes to the natural sciences, we do not have the lab courses for them. Now, when it comes, when it comes to the IGETSI, which would be the intersegmental general education transfer certificate, the pattern that is required for the UC systems, we have the English Communication online, arts and humanities online, social and behavioral sciences online, physical and biological sciences, again, we do not have the labs online. Languages other than English, well, we don't have the courses online, but we do have some of their language labs online. And history and political science, one, are not part of the IGETSI transfer. What are the areas that we do not yet have available online in order to allow us to have a degree entirely online? One is oral communications. We have three courses at Saddleback College that meet the requirement for oral communications. They are Business English, Speech One, and Speech Five. At the last curriculum committee meeting in the spring semester of this year, the Business Division submitted a Business English course on a trial basis for a course that could be offered entirely as an online course. The curriculum committee, after reviewing the course, felt that they needed some more time to look at it, and as a result, we could not offer this course this semester. The faculty of the Business Division and the faculty of the Speech Division now are working with the curriculum committee to attempt on a trial basis for the spring semester of 2009, the Business English course. And the condition attached to that course is that at the end of the spring semester, the students will be tested, the students taking the online class will be compared to the students taking the regular in-class, to make sure that the students taking the Business English online are receiving the information that they need to receive, the content area that they need to receive. And once we get this, then we will have met that criterion. As far as the natural science courses are concerned, I did mention to you earlier on about the problem that we are having with lab courses. The Science, Math, and Engineering Division is currently working on a Biology class, Biology 20, that will have a lab attached to it, but there will be a caveat attached with that class. That class will not be a transferable class. It is going to apply towards the non-transferable AA degree, but not to the complete AA transferable degree. And the final one is the physical assessment. We currently have a hybrid course in physical assessment that will be offered in the spring semester. The lecture board will be done online, but the students will have to come on campus for the physical assessment. Once we have those three areas completed, we will have the AA degree completely online.
Good evening, members of the board, Chancellor Mather, ladies and gentlemen.
Irvine Valley College's online certificate and degree programs are very well-developed at this point. You can see the statistics here in this slide with nearly a tripling in each of these workload measures of section count, headcount of students, and FTEs. Currently, throughout the year, we offer 98 online courses in numerous sections each semester, and here again, you can see the significant growth between 2003 and 2008. The AA degrees that we offer at Irvine Valley College include an associate degree in accounting as well as a business management degree. Two certificates are on the list and more are being planned, one certificate in accounting and the other in spreadsheets. And the graphics appear. In the general ed pattern for the associate's degree, we have numerous courses in each category, including statistics and algebra, critical thinking, several courses, American institutions, this is political science, one, American government, an array of social sciences, cultural diversity courses, and humanities and lifelong health and personal development in all three of the categories. In addition to that, the CSU pattern, the Cal State University pattern, is broken out in a grid here, and as you can see that, you can see that each grid, each part of the grid does have a course, again, with the science laboratory course not being among the courses in Area B. The intersegmental general education courses are shown here, the blue boxes do indicate the areas, a gap analysis where we do need to do development of online courses in English and communication skills, and again, that's science lab requirement. So the GE courses needed in summary then are Writing One, and faculty are working on that this semester, and in addition to that, Speech One, which is the public speaking course. And lastly, another lab science course, we're working on a hybrid, a combination in-person and online course in the area of physical science oceanography. The challenges in summary then are orientations to the online experience for the students. We're working on a novel approach to offering these orientations online instead of in-person, which is quite appropriate for online education. Training of additional faculty so we can increase the participation rate by our faculty who wish to do so. And then lastly, an array of student support services online, including tutoring and after-hours help with blackboard and other components of the online learning experience. And that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
All right. The only thing I had to add is my son took a, an online anthropology class at Saddleback, Professor Garcia, over the summer, and it was a wonderful experience. So thanks to the folks at Saddleback and especially thanks to Professor Garcia, but I can attest personally to, to the fine, the fine work that was done there. All right, a number of trustees would like to comment, and thank you, gentlemen, for your report. Trustee Padberg?
Yes, I think that the online courses, or the online education is a wonderful idea. It provides a lot of flexibility for people who are challenged with their schedules as well as transportation and other issues. I did hear from IBC that you are working on a speech course that's online. I didn't hear that from Saddleback, but I am aware that Saddleback accepted a speech course online from an out-of-state university to meet the requirements for your AA degree. So I find it a little bit ironic that you're not working on that. It is possible to do, and it has been accepted and recognized for a student who took a course in Indiana, at Indiana University, not a community college, it was an online speech course. So it is possible to do. And I assume you are working on that at IBC, and I would hope you would work on it at Saddleback.
Thank you. Trustee Lang?
Yes, great report. Thank you for that information, and obviously, this is a very important component of, you know, our offerings at this point and will become increasingly so, I think. I noticed, I think particularly in Dr. Verdiyan's report, and it was probably there in Dr. Justice's report as well, but about the acceptance of the online courses at the Cal States and IBC, and I'm just wondering what the issue is in terms of articulation, what we're doing about that, to the extent that those courses aren't transferable-type courses. Could you speak to that perhaps just a little bit?
Well, when it comes to the courses that are articulated, there is nothing on the transcript that indicates that the course was taken online. However, what the UC, the UCs are doing, as well as some of the private universities, including USC, they are calling the colleges and they're asking the students specific questions about how that class was taken, whether that was an online class or whether it was not an online class. And it's not only at Saddleback College that this is happening, but it's happening statewide in all community colleges, and I do believe that IBC has had the same concern. And as a result of that, the faculty get very concerned that they might lose the articulation, and articulation is very important because if you lose it, it's much more difficult to regain the articulation in the courses that you lose articulation.
Okay, so, but I don't think you specifically addressed my concern, and that is, do, do we have, I think, exposure here, if you will, of a student that takes an online course at Saddleback and IVC, expecting that to be a transferable course and finding out perhaps later on?
No, we, we make it very clear to, that's why in the area where we have a lab attached to it, we do not have a course that is, we don't have a lab in any of those courses that articulate.
And...
And we make it clear, we explain to the students that, like in the case I mentioned, Biology 20, when we're going to do that course with a lab online, we are making it very clear to the students that this is a course that will not transfer.
Okay, and then, and then further to that would be, what are we doing in terms of working with Cal State and UCI, for example, to be able for those courses to be transferred?
Our, our faculty are currently meeting with the faculty at UCI and UCLA and also at the Cal State CSU Fullerton and Long Beach to look at how we can approach the online lab issues right now, and we do hope that we should be successful in that.
Okay. Trustee Melchior?
Yes, thank you. I thought it was an excellent report also, and I do want to thank you because my son did take an online class last year, and I'm currently, I'm a very hands-on trustee, so I like to experience what's going on in the colleges, and I'm currently taking an online real estate class. And when I went to the first orientation, which was an orientation that all the students had to go to, I learned from Professor Martin Welk that we have the second-largest real estate program in, in the state, and I believe it's because you can really complete the entire certificate in real estate and get your real estate license and become a broker and, and a real estate salesperson totally online. And I thought that was really interesting, and I'm, I'm enjoying the online class because if you study pedagogy, you learn that immediate feedback is so important, and, and they do have, you know, pop quizzes that come up, and they do have little skits that come up, and, and makes it interesting to have a, a combination of both audio and visual and so auditory learners can, can, can learn from it as well as visual learners. So I, I'm enjoying the experience, and I recommend our students try it also. I also think that it is very, very important to ensure that these classes articulate so that our students can transfer successfully. I wanted to ask, is it listed in the schedule, if a class, in the class schedule, if a class is transferable to the UC or CSU, or if it's not transferable?
Yes, at both colleges, the course is identified as being transferable. There's also a list of the general ed courses and other core requirements that do transfer. Often, the course numbering system will be an indicator as well.
Okay, that's, that's excellent because the students should know right, right up front if it's a transferable or non-transferable course. I, I did also, a number of years ago, teach biology at Rancho Santiago College, and I taught a biology lab, and I, I would think it'd be really difficult to, you know, get the feeling of dissecting a frog or, or looking through a microscope or studying, taking flowers apart in, in a lab. I, I think that, that hands-on experience is, is really helpful to really understand organisms, so, but I'd be interested in exploring it. I think it's, we can really do fabulous things online now, and I applaud you for exploring it.
When you take an online course, do they know you're a trustee? You might skew the curve. I was wondering. Trustee Jay?
Yes, my, you had mentioned articulation and some of the difficulties there. I noticed that only 21 community colleges right now, at least from your survey, showed that they had online courses. Are you running into any accreditation problems, not articulation, but accreditation at any level with online courses? Do you know of anybody who is in any institution? Okay, okay, thank you.
Seeing no further questions or comments, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that report.
Go ahead.
President Wagner, I'd just like to mention that I would like to take this opportunity to ask trustees to suggest topics for the next year, discussion topics, because as you know, I'll be bringing in a list of suggested topics to you in due time for your adoption at the organizational meeting in December. So in the meantime, please feel free to suggest topics. Also, I invite the college community and ATEP community to suggest topics as well. I ask the presidents of the academic centers, as well as the college presidents and administrators, and all faculty and staff members, any topics that you would suggest, and we'll run it by the trustees to see if they will be so inclined to have presentation on it during our 2009 board meetings. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We are at the consent calendar. Let me ask my trustee colleagues what items, if any, to poll. Trustee Padberg?
Yes, 5.4, 5.5, and 5.13.
Trustee Lang?
Yes, I would like to pull item 5.9.
I'd like to move the item.
All right, moved in second, and let's vote on the items that have not been polled. It's okay, yeah. And Trustee Jay, your vote, please. Trustee Jay, again, we're having trouble down there.
Oh, I pressed it and it seemed to...
There we go. All right, matter carries unanimously, and let's now move to 5.4, pulled by Trustee Padberg. This is with respect to furnished lease for modular buildings, and it's here for approval. Yes, ma'am? Questions?
Yes, these are our modular, this would be continuing the, the lease, I guess, that we have in place for the current, for the existing modular buildings that are down on lower campuses, is that correct? Is that correct, Eric?
Yes, that is. The, as you recall, we purchased some of the modular buildings down there and we leased others, and so we've decided we need to continue that lease for another period.
Just for a year? It, it seems to me like...
It seems to me like we're going to be coming back again in another year with this because a lot of the reasons for the swing space will probably not be completed in a year, so...
It could be.
It could be. Okay. I have just had a few questions about it, but I will support the item. So I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Further discussion? Let's vote. All right, matter carries unanimously. Trustee, item 5.5, polled by trustee Padberg again, and this is classroom video projection systems, and it's here for approval.
Thank you. I'd like to hear some more about what we're going to get for our $104,000 with audiovisual. It's a big figure, so if someone could give me some more details, the contract doesn't spell that out.
Let me turn to the chancellor and see if we can get an answer.
Yes, I'd like to call upon Brandy Delena to respond to this. Thank you.
There she is.
Hi. So for your $104,000, that will include projectors that will feed into a podium. And at the podium, you'll have cameras that will also feed into the projector screen. The network, the computer will be there that will tie into the network. There will be cable, cabling capabilities. So really taking us to, with all this technology that we're talking about, it really takes us to the 21st century and incorporates everything into a podium that the teacher will stand at, very much like the one that I'm standing at here, and have all of those different modes of teaching available to them. Sorry, Professor.
And as a follow-up to that, I assume that all of the support pieces are there to do all these jobs that you're talking about. So we're not going to have to come back and ask for another $500,000 to get the cable or to get the computer or what?
This includes all of the cable, all of the DVD components, all of the speakers, all of those, relative to, specifically to the classroom instruction.
Okay. Thank you. I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, let's vote. Seeing no further requests to speak. Matter carries unanimously. Item 5.9, polled by trustee Lang. This is declaring membership in the SOUP insurance program with respect to ATEP. Yes, sir?
Yes, I...
Excuse me. I had several questions about this item. And I'm, I think it's a great idea, and I certainly am supportive of this, but wanted to know whether this covered just ATEP or any other college or campus projects, what effect this might, would have on the bid process, since we are going to obviously be boosting everything up by the 2.9% that we want to have covered by those bids. And also, whether there would be any other districts or entities that could also participate with us in this type of program.
I'd like to call upon Deputy Chancellor Portner to respond.
I can answer some of those questions. If we need more, Brandy worked on this, and she can help us. With regard to, can other, can the colleges take advantage of this and not just ATEP? The answer is yes. Other, this is a joint powers authority, and so there are other colleges that are, that have a program like this through this joint powers authority. How will it affect the bid process? They'll be told to include the cost of the insurance in their bid.
Okay. Have we talked to other districts in coming forward with this proposal so that we can sort of, I mean, the idea of, in my mind, of establishing a joint powers agency is be able to spread the cost of the insurance for these kinds of projects over, you know, a number of different organizations. And I'm just wondering what kind of articulation, if you will, that we've had with others with respect to this program.
I think the answer is it already exists. And so we talked to the insurance administrator who helped us with this, but I'll ask Brandy to verify that.
Okay. Thank you.
That's correct. We had conversations with the administrator of the program, not necessarily other districts, and it does already exist.
So we would be coming in and participating?
We would.
With others that already, into an established program?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's no cost, no initiation fee for us. The 2.9% that you mentioned would be the cost, and that's relative to the estimated cost of what it's already costing a contractor to provide us this insurance, their insurance for construction projects. What's really nice about this insurance program is that when we get insurance through the contractor, there's a possibility that it's not as stable as what we'll encounter here with regard to the completion of the project and the years that follow. With this insurance, we have a 10-year period where our insurance still applies to the project. And there's only one insurance program that covers us, the general contractor, the construction manager. So there's, there's not a lot of finger pointing. If there's an issue that needs to be covered by insurance, it gets covered.
Okay. I guess that brings up another question than that I have, and that is that if we would be coming into an existing JPA in which they've already underwritten other projects, are we then accepting some risk with our premium dollars with respect to those other agencies that are already in, you know, in the mix on this?
I, I'm not an expert in this field, and so the answer that I give you will be maybe not as clear as it needs to be. However, yes, there is risk involved for us when we join a JPA. And there are board meetings that are held, I believe that it's quarterly, so that members of the JPA can make decisions about how they want to expose themselves. And we will have two people who participate in that decision-making so that we're, we're making intelligent decisions about how we expose ourselves. But the 2.9% that we collect from the contractors does go into a pool that then spreads across to pay any kind of a claim that might happen. Though the claims are, I have in this book somewhere, I have percentages of claims, and they're comparatively very low.
Okay. I guess my concern then, from what you've described, is understanding maybe a little bit better who we're jumping into bed with here in terms of, you know, the premium dollars that we would be adding with respect to the projects that we would be pursuing on a, on a prospective basis.
We would still have our coverage. Once we put our money into the pool, our, certain limits are guaranteed to us. So in, with that regard, our exposure isn't one that we would need to be too concerned about, if that's what I'm hearing you say. Is there a possibility that we put our money into the pool and then we don't get any kind of a payout because other people have collected already? No. That's not something that could happen.
Okay. Okay. I'm not, I'm not sure if I necessarily accept what you've described since you've admitted beforehand that you're not, you're not certain about what the risk-sharing arrangement really is among all of the different agencies that would be involved in this.
And in my answer to you, I'm parroting what I've heard from the project administrator more than I am having had conversations with other districts. That hasn't happened.
Okay. All right. And trustee Padberg.
Yes, it's my understanding that we do have certain insurance already that's a part of a JPA. And I'd like our deputy chancellor to comment on that and that we haven't had any particular difficulties. In fact, it's been a very positive experience that I'm aware of.
That's correct. On the districts, general liability, policy, and the other forms of insurance, we've had very good experience in the JPA. There's been no problems. It's been very responsibly run.
And just to follow up, how long or how many years have we had that? I think a significant time, correct? Many?
Probably 20 or more. I don't know.
Right. Thank you.
Chancellor.
In response to trustee Lang's questions, just to make sure that your comfort level is strong, we'll make sure to follow up on this, and I'll provide some additional information on it through the update. Be happy to do that.
All right. Trustee Padberg.
I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, let's, well, let's vote. There we go. Matter carries unanimously. We are at item 5.13, polled by trustee Padberg. This is the trustee requests to attend conferences.
Yes, this is an item that's nearby in Los Angeles, and I assume the $90 is the registration fee. However, this, the way this item is presented, it certainly is not accurate in the total cost. There will be travel costs, meal costs, and perhaps some other incidental costs. So I'd like, when these items come to us, for it to be recognized that we will be paying for travel for any trustees that go. And do we have a certain number or a number that we anticipate will attend us?
Chancellor Mather.
I'm not sure at this point which trustee requested this, but if you note underestimated cost, there are double asterisks which indicate at the bottom that the amount listed includes estimated airfare. I would imagine that will include the ground transportation, lodging, meals, and other expenditures. So that's the total estimated cost.
It also says dates, the 22nd, and there's one asterisk that says this is for the number of nights of lodging. So I don't know, is this for lodging? What is it for? And is, I don't think we're going to have anybody flying from Orange County to LA. So what you've suggested is more confusing than what my question originally posed.
Well, you're correct, trustee Padberg, that obviously it can't include lodging these days for $90. I don't know if you can even get space at Motel, Motel 6. But in any case...
Everyone gets a good rate.
Yeah. This is, this is the total cost, total estimated cost for one day.
Trustee Williams.
I got an email about this conference. I forwarded it to the chancellor. It's $90, anybody that wants to go. That's the registration fee. I don't know if I'm going to make it. If you notice the date, it happens to be the date of our next board meeting, so you'd have to leave a little early if you go directly from this forum at the LA Marriott in downtown LA directly to the board meeting. It's FYI, if you want to go, it's there. Estimated cost is $90. And I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in, well, all right, let's vote. Matter carries with one no vote. That concludes the consent calendar. Let me ask my colleagues, anyone need a break? Shall we move on? We are at item 6.1. It is the adoption of the final budget. And let's start with the chancellor.
Thank you, President Wagner. As we all know, at this point, there is still no state budget. We presented a tentative budget to the board in June, and now we are bringing the final budget based on all the information that we have. Last month, we also brought to the board for your consideration and approval some basic aid allocations for a number of areas. For example, cost of the board election, technology upgrades, instructional equipment, maintenance, and the like. And the board did approve that item. And so those approved allocations are included in the final budget. The district reserve for the economic uncertainties has been set at 7.5% per board direction. At this point, I would turn it over to Deputy Chancellor Portner to see if you would have any comments.
There's not very much to say about the final budget. You read the paper about what's going on in the state, and there's very little right now. There's only a few comments I'll make, and that's all I plan to talk about unless you have a question. Number one, just out of information, the total budget for all funds that we have for this coming year is $425 million. The, the budget of the general fund is $228 million. The amount of increase in the state funding formula that we use through the DRAC model that goes to the colleges is $2 million. And that has nothing to do with state funding quota, because there is none. It has to do with a larger base that came from enrollment growth in the past school year. So that growth was, was calculated, put into the, the funding model, and generated $2 million extra revenue. That's what, that's about. The only other comment, trustee Jay mentioned the, the retiree benefits, trust fund, and that it's fully funded. It's, and he did mention, I think, that it's the past service liability that's fully funded. So what our obligation is every year is to, to keep paying for the current service liability. The amount that the actuary calculates is adding to our debt each year as employees continue to work here. Right now, for this year, that's 1.8 million. And so you would expect a number like that in the future every year, and it'll be adjusted by, you know, whatever factors actuaries use, like the cost of benefits. Other than that, I have no other comments.
All right. Trustee Padberg.
Yes, just a point of order to our technical people. I'm not getting any audio from comments that are coming from our administrators or shared governance. Perhaps they could take a look at that. And in addition, on the budget, I know we've approved the tentative budget, and this is identical, I guess, or if it's not, please tell us so. I have a question, and I've talked to you about this previously, Deputy Chancellor, about the way our basic aid income and, and funds are being divided. And you indicated to me that it's pretty much 50%, 50, 50 goes, 50% goes to Saddleback, 50% goes to Irvine Valley College. Now, of course, that doesn't take into ATEP's portion. And I want to raise that as something that we need to reexamine in the upcoming year. We have 75% or at least 2/3 of the students at Saddleback that, that IBC has. Of course, when we get to full development on ATEP, we may have to put all of our basic aid dollars there. But I think that there should be a per-student enrollment figure that we go by, some kind of per capita that we look at, so that we are doing this truly evenly and not shortchanging where the most students are. So that's my one concern I would have about our basic aid.
Okay. Trustee Williams.
Well, we had quite a discussion the last time we debated the tentative budget, so I'm going to move approval of the final budget.
A second?
All right. Is there, moved and seconded? All right. Seeing further discussion, let's continue, though. I have trustee Jay next.
Disregard, I'm fine.
I'd like to hear that. Trustee Lang, you're next, and that was a lesson to you.
I'll, I'll...
I didn't know it was going to be that easy. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just...
Chancellor Mather.
Thank you. I would just like to mention that I don't think it is accurate that we allocate basic aid dollars on a 50/50 basis between Saddleback and IBC. For the most part, it is on a 2:1 ratio because Saddleback College is larger than IBC. But at the same time, we do look, we do look at each situation separately as well. But it's not automatic that...
That's, that's not what I've been told. That's contrary to what I've been told.
That's why I'm commenting on it.
Good. Let's clear it up.
Thank you. That's it.
Trustee Lang.
I guess you forced me to have to...
I didn't do anything.
And that is that, you know, I don't think that there's any conscious decision to say, okay, because we have so many students at Saddleback and so many at IBC, this is how we're going to allocate basic aid dollars. I think there's a process in which we identify what the most important projects are at the colleges, at the district, et cetera. And that's the way the basic aid dollars, it's a very collaborative and collegial type of process that we use in order to do that. And it seems to me the process is working, and I'm not sure that the kind of methodology that you've suggested would give us a better result.
Trustee Padberg.
Well, I think that's something that we need to debate in an open forum, and I don't believe that's been fully fleshed out. Everybody has had needs. We've looked at them, and we've tried to, when we, our dollars were coming in, now they're starting to dry up. We've tried to be generous and recognize the need. However, there is a need to do it on a proportional basis to meet the most students' needs.
Deputy Chancellor.
The money is not distributed strictly by percentages. It is, however, roughly done that way when we're, when we're providing money to the colleges for instructional equipment, maybe supplies, scheduled maintenance, campus beautification. It's not a firm percentage, but it's about, there's 1/3. With regard to building and capital construction, that's based upon need. It's also based upon the projects as they're submitted to the state in the five-year construction plan, what's approved there, what our match is required to be, those kinds of different factors.
of different factors.
Seeing no further request to speak, the matter has been moved and seconded. Let's vote. And the budget carries unanimously. We are at item 6.2, naming the Health Sciences Building.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. 6.3, on the subject of invocation, here for approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, trustee Padberg.
Yes, I'd like to move that this item be tabled.
Is there a second to the motion to table?
Yeah, I will second that motion because to study it a little bit more.
Okay, the motion is to table. That's a non-debatable motion. Let's vote on the motion to table. And it looks like it is tabled on a four-to-two vote. All right. We are at item 6.4, which is here for discussion and approval. These policies have been to us before.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
No.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on these items? This is for approval.
This is the second time we've had any.
Seeing no request to speak, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.5, this is for acceptance for review and study, not for approval.
Move acceptance.
All right, questions or comments from the trustees?
Um.
Trustee Lang, he beat you. Trustee Lang.
Oh, he did.
I'm sorry, a couple of different comments on this one. I have suggested on Board Policy 3340 to the chancellor that we consider adding some language to this policy that to reemphasize the prohibition of the use of district cell phones and PDAs while operating a motor vehicle, and also to make it clear that liability for violation of that would be the responsibility of the person that uses that. And then the other comment that I wanted to make was, or actually, I had a question on 3102 investment policy. I noticed that we have substantially changed that policy, specifically deleted some language in the responsibility section. And I guess I just wanted to, again, have the, either the chancellor or the deputy chancellor, review with us, what are the investment options with respect to excess funds, or liquid funds, I should say, that the district has. And I suppose I ought to ask the question also specifically as concerning the new fund that we set up regarding employee retirement, whether that's going to be a managed fund or self-managed fund, and, you know, perhaps you could talk about that a little bit.
All right, well, there's a couple of questions. Let me turn to the chancellor first and see if we get.
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to call upon Deputy Chancellor Portner.
Okay, is this working at all right now?
We can hear you.
Okay.
I don't think the mic is.
With regard to the cell phones, let me make one comment. I don't know if this will help at all, but.
Yeah, use it anyway.
Okay, if it will help at all.
Yeah.
But the cell phones are not owned by the district. And what the employee receives is an allowance, and the employee pays tax on that allowance. And so at that point, it's a contract between the employee and the cellphone provider. The employee pays for the monthly fee themselves.
I'm not sure that completely addresses the liability concern. And if they're talking on even their cellphone on district business.
Your mic is not on.
I'm sorry.
Is there, is that an issue for us? I don't know.
I don't know. We could ask. We'll ask that.
That's all I ask.
All right. And the next question?
Investment policy.
The investment policy. The investment policy is a recommended change completely by CCLC, who is, provides us with sample policies that they recommend throughout the state. So I think that the last one was more ours. And so when their model policy came through, we just elected to adopt theirs. With regard to what limitations do we have, we have, we're able to invest in the county treasury. We're able to invest in LEAF, the state fund. Both of those investment funds are governed by the same government code and the type of investment that they can put the money in. So they're all pretty conservative funds, although sometimes, as we know, things go bad. But they're really quite limited in what the investment can be. Now, with regard to the trust, that's a completely different animal, because we've established a trust, and the trust has contracted with a firm to do the investment management. And it's not coming to me right now, but Beth is here and she'll know.
We contracted with Benefit Trust Corporation, our company, and they will administer through Morgan Stanley. Morgan Stanley will do the investing on the retiree trust fund.
And I should add to that, that when the trust board met the first time, we had a conversation with the Morgan Stanley people where we defined how much risk we're willing to take. And it's not much. Of course, we want to be able to achieve greater interest than we would in the county treasury. On the other hand, we don't want to risk the money. So it was a pretty conservative parameters that we gave them.
Questions answered. All right, trustee Padberg, I'm sorry.
Yes, just in response to trustee Lang's concern about 3340, I certainly would support what you're suggesting. However, I feel it's not needed. The law is the law. I'm sure that our insurance policy would not cover an individual if they are personally responsible for an accident because they were using their district cellphone or their district PDA. The law doesn't cover PDAs, but I believe that it really should, and there may be some rectifying of that in the future. But clearly, if you're in a tentative, you're going to be personally at fault, and the district is not going to cover you with our liability policy if you're personally at fault. So I think your concerns are good ones, but perhaps not needed. I think we already have it covered.
Just, once again, there are no district telephones. They're all phones owned by the individual who has the service.
Trustee Williams.
Well, as long as we're talking about the cell phones in the past, though, we have had employees, including trustees, with district-issued cell phones. And I believe that's a problem now. Is that not correct, Harry?
We changed that for a very specific reason, and it has to do with IRS regulations.
The Internal Revenue Service, yes.
And we were audited regarding that. So if the district provides an employee with a cellphone and a plan, that's taxable to the employee.
That's what I was going to comment on, yes.
And we have to make deductions from their paycheck. So, and what happens is that the IRS audits finds that we've been doing that, then the penalty goes to the district. So they don't go after the employee for back taxes, they go after us. Interestingly enough, there was an article in the paper several, a couple of months ago now, where UCI was, I think it was UCI, one of the campuses of University of California, was audited on this, and they had to pay the IRS over $200,000 in back taxes for that. So we've resolved that problem for us. We don't have any tax issues with IRS. Like I say, they came in, they looked at it, they audited that specific thing.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? All right, let's vote for acceptance for review and study. Carries unanimously. Item 6.6, the academic personnel action items. And I'll begin with the vice chancellor. Are there any changes or updates to this?
Other than that?
All right.
Move approval.
Is there a second discussion? Let's vote. And that carries unanimously. Item 6.7, classified personnel actions. And again, any updates?
Changes.
No changes, all right.
Move approval again.
Questions or comments? Let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. At 6.8, this is the Sciences Building Final Project Proposal Revisions. And, okay, and I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Uh, second.
All right, moved and seconded for discussion purposes. Let me start with the chancellor.
Thank you, President Wagner. There is an interest on the part of Salbach College to change the location of the Science Building. We are at the FPP stage. This is the second phase of the planning. This is the final project proposal to the state chancellor's office. And we have a very narrow window of opportunity to change the location and notify the state chancellor's office by September 15th. That's why this item is here. I work with President Todd Burnett. He has worked with his Planning and Budget Council meeting and others. And I'd like to call upon Brandy Delena to indicate from where to where the location is being proposed for a change.
Samira, could you help me? Thank you.
It should show up on your screen if the technology is working.
Thank you. And full screen. Okay, so the diagram that you see in front of you now is the Salbach campus. And you'll see the number one somewhat centered in the diagram, and then a number two just below that. Number one is the location of the original building sighting. It's the location that was identified in the master plan. Once the building, hmm, once the building was, thank you, cited in that location, it was determined that there may be some need to encroach on a hillside. And I think you might all be aware of the problems that we've had with hillsides on this site. And so we thought it would be better to take it off the hillside and move it over to parking lot seven, which is where the number two is. And you can see evidence of extra parking lot around the outskirts of that building, which will then allow for less hillside impact. Also, it'll provide us with an opportunity to have more association with the library and the existing science, math, science, and engineering building. It's a little more closely related to those buildings.
Brandy, could you please comment on also, since we are suggesting that the location we moved to a parking lot, which is relatively on a flat piece of land, would that adversely impact the parking situation at Salbach College?
Well, today is certainly the right day to be asking that question, isn't it? Yes, it will, but it would have anyway. It's going to just move it from one parking lot to another parking lot. There will be a loss in parking spots as a result of this building's construction. Now, in the master plan, we have made provisions for a future parking structure. So it would be addressed, but that parking would be addressed eventually, but not before this building is constructed.
All right, trustee Elchekar.
Yes, I know that today's the first day of classes, and I know that parking was a real problem today because there are so many new students that have started classes. And I'm actually concerned about taking away one of our parking structures and how would it adversely impact our students who've spent a long time looking for parking places, particularly the first day of classes. So how are we planning to address this, to create parking for the students that need it, particularly the first few weeks of classes when it's really critical?
Truly, it is the first few weeks of classes where we are most impacted by the parking problems, after which it does seem to diminish quite a bit. You know, the students are on campus a lot longer in these first few weeks with buying their books and identifying the different classroom locations and the health centers and whatnot. So after the first two weeks, it's not as impacted, but in that first two weeks, absolutely, it is impacted. At this time, we don't have a plan in place for addressing that two-week period.
Well, Chancellor Mather said that we are going to address that, and we will look into it by the time that the, this building is, because this is a long-term plan. This is a request we're making to the state. So.
Yes.
With that comment from Chancellor Mather, then I will accept it. But I really think we do have to provide enough parking for students. Otherwise, you know, it just won't be comfortable for them to go to school here. I think it's very, very important to provide enough parking for students, okay?
Certainly, in this first week of experiencing the impact to the parking, we've been throwing around a lot of ideas, but since they're all still up here, I certainly, I don't feel comfortable sharing those with you at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Lang.
What becomes the fate of Area 1 when we no longer have the building there?
It will remain parking.
Oh, okay, so that is additional parking there.
It is parking now.
It's parking now.
Oh, okay.
So in either, excuse me for interrupting, so in either case, either in configuration number one or configuration number two, parking would be lost. So it's, there's a net loss of no parking.
By the shift.
In either, in either configuration.
Correct.
Okay, so, and I do understand that the buildings on the hill, sometimes have had problems with structural problems. And so I understand that concern. And I know it's a lot less expensive to construct a building on flat land than on the hill.
Yes.
Trustee Padberg.
Can you give us a figure of how many spaces will be lost?
Not tonight, but I'd be happy to report back to you on that.
Okay, and I know that we do have a lot of lower campus parking, so that we could certainly use a shuttle or something. I'm sure it's very manageable, and it can be worked out. So I'll support the item, and I move the item.
Second.
Yes, sir.
We just need to push for more online courses.
Absolutely.
You got that right.
Yes.
All right, the item has been moved and seconded. It is here for approval, so let's get our voting screen back and vote.
Grace is working.
I know she is diligent. Thank you, ma'am. All right. And the matter carries unanimously. Item 7, 7.1, this is a classified Senate resolution from IVC. And I suppose we have the proponents of this resolution here today, but let me start with President Rockmore to introduce this item to us.
Yes, I'd be happy to. This is really an exciting moment. I believe that this stems from a, an opportunity of a staff development event that was held, that the classified staff attended. And as a result of that work, this resolution was crafted. And I think it's probably best for me to ask G. Dixon to comment on how this came together.
Oh, I liked the way that went.
Pass the book.
No.
Yes, that's exactly right. Dr. Rockmore is saying that the resolution was put together by some of the classified employees, a small group, as a matter of fact. But it was taken to our IVC's classified Senate meeting, and it was voted on unanimously. And I believe it's going to go, Wendy, going to go with the accreditation report. And we're happy with that. And now it's here at the board meeting, and we're happy with that. We're really, I'm excited about it because everyone was in agreeance. And that's what I try to, try to get to. That's what we try to work on when we have our Senate meetings, when we, you know, and everyone, I don't know if you guys have read it?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, good, fantastic. Then I hope you hit agreeance with us.
Well, I think this gets unanimous acceptance up here. And I want to thank you and the classified Senate. I've had a chance to work with a couple of your members on the Focus, Accreditation Focus Group, and it has been a true joy to work with Susan. And it has been a true joy to work with Susan and with John, so.
Those two were in on this, on the initial preparation of this.
Oh, great. Okay. Well, certainly my thanks individually, and I think I speak on behalf of all of my colleagues. Thanks to IVC Classified Senate for this report, or this resolution. We very much appreciate it. And I see a couple of other trustees who would like to comment as well. So trustee Melchiker?
Yes, I very much appreciate it also. And I just wanted to comment that when I was first elected, one of the trustees that was elected with me, name is Iris Swanson, and she came from the classified staff. And she was a lovely woman. And it was because of her that the Classified Senate was founded at Saddleback College. And ours was the first district in the state to have a Classified Senate. And I'm very, very proud of that. And I also have one question. The Classified Senate was just honored recently with a very important honor. Can you explain that, please?
The Saddleback.
Oh, the Saddleback, I'm sorry. Mary Williams. Okay, go ahead.
There are criteria that establish a model Classified Senate. And one of the things that our Senate did this past year was to sponsor the president-elect as a area representative to the 4CS. And he actually completed all of the applications and submitted it. That's Russ Hamilton. He's statewide vice president for the Southern Region this year. And based on having met all of the criteria, we were awarded the, one of the Model Senate awards for the Classified Senate for this year. And I think that we also hosted 4CS in their spring meeting this past year, and they've invited IVC to do it next year. So the board will be here at IVC, provided they accepted the request. And so it's very possible that they may be a Model Senate next year.
Well, congratulations to Saddleback College for being notified.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, I also just wanted to briefly express my appreciation to President G. Dixon and past President Pete Colclaw, and all of the members of the IVC Classified Senate for their demonstration of collegiality through the passage of this resolution. So thank you.
All right. And Chancellor Mather.
I would like to take this opportunity. I know I complimented the IVC Classified Senate and recognition of the Saddleback Senate in the chancellor's cabinet, but let me take this opportunity also to congratulate and thank both the senators and particularly in the context of this resolution, the IVC Classified Senate. And just like in any resolution, there are also whereas's, but I'd like to read the last paragraph. I think it's highly significant. "That be finally resolved that the Classified Senate renews its commitment to work collegially with the board of trustees, chancellor, district administration, college administration, faculty and students in order to maximize student success and institutional effectiveness." That's what it's all about. And you, through this resolution, have created a wonderful esprit de corps. Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, let's move to item 7.2, which is our monthly basic aid report. And questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, thank you. Seeing none. Item 7.3 is the monthly facilities plan status report. Again, seeing no questions and comments, we move on. 7.4, the list of board requested reports. All right. 7.5, a report here for information, our quarterly investment report. And finally, our quarterly financial status report, item 7.6. And again, thanks to Deputy Chancellor Portner and his staff for keeping us informed with those items every month. All right, we are then at item eight, which is the reports from the constituent groups. And let me begin with the president of Saddleback College and his first report to us, President Burnett.
Thank you, President. Thank you, members of the board. First of all, thank you. And I'm, once again, as I, I was here once before, chancellor. I was here to just be welcomed. And, but this is my first full meeting. I'm thrilled to be here. I'm, my, this is my third week on the job. And I will tell you, as I've been saying all through in-service and flex week, when you start a new position, you know, you're always wondering if it's going to meet your expectations. And, you know, if they do, that's good. That means you made a right move. Of course, if it's lower than your expectations, you, oops, I made a mistake. I will have to say, and I've told this to our faculty, staff and students, that it has exceeded my expectations. The quality of the students, faculty and staff at Saddleback, I already had a high opinion of it, is even greater over my first three weeks. And I will say, that's a tribute to this board, it's a tribute to our chancellor's, a tribute to all of our students, faculty and staff for creating such a wonderful college that I am very thrilled and honored to be here. So, and very excited to continue to work with everybody. The staff has been very welcoming to me and faculty and staff, and I greatly appreciate that. With that said, it feels like it's been more than three weeks. We, as you know, not only getting your feet wet, but also having an in-service flex week and of course accreditation and a lot of other things that have come up have really gotten allowed me an opportunity to jump into the fire, so to speak. But I'll tell you, it's been quite enjoyable. I think we're already making tremendous, tremendous progress, even a matter of three weeks. Like I said, that feels much longer. My report is written and is pretty straightforward, but I would like to say that the next board meeting, as you might have already heard and you already know, we're having a nice celebration here for the 40th anniversary of Saddleback College. We have a lot of exciting things planned, which we'll give you more details at that time, but we're looking forward to celebrating with all of you that momentous occasion for the 40 wonderful years at Saddleback and for another 40 in the future to go. So thank you.
Very good. President Rockmore.
Yes, I'd like to say that it's great to have a number of new colleagues here at the table on both sides. I've worked with all of them so far, and it's a real pleasure. I think we have a great, great team here. In terms of what's going on at the college, I'll just mention two quick things. One is our flex week, our in-service week, I think was highly successful. I want to thank in this setting all of the individuals who are involved in making that a very excellent program from one end to the other. But most impressively, the campus is going through a kind of evolution, is that it has been absolutely packed the last couple of days. And we're definitely seeing more full-time students that are involved on the campus. Really has a good, solid collegiate feel to it with the number of students that we have. And also, to more importantly, thank everyone at the college who this year has stepped out to lend a hand to each and every student that's, comes aboard, whether it's in signage, answering questions, taking students to their classrooms and just being there to help them out. It's been terrific, and I thank everybody for that.
Thank you. And let's go to the associate provost at ATEP.
Great. Thank you. We're also running out of parking spaces at ATEP as we approach almost 800 students. And we did put in 20 new spaces that are directly across, and they're already filling. So that's good news and bad news. One of the most exciting things is the Orange County Film Commission is hosting a meeting at ATEP tomorrow to introduce the master plans for ATEP to the Orange County film community. It's been greeted with a lot of excitement, and this is how we begin generating that interest for our future development. I also wanted to thank Saddleback College Maintenance and IVC Maintenance for everything they do for ATEP, everything from weed abatement to locks and keys and everything. We just couldn't do it without those two departments. I want to thank them. And also thank Chief Will Glenn for his security plans at ATEP, which should begin in the next few weeks. We'll have IVC police force in the evenings and on weekends, and we're very excited to welcome them as part of the team. Thank you.
Thank you. From the IVC Academic Senate, Professor Gabriella.
Thank you very much. I would just like to say, welcome to my 16 new colleagues at Irvine Valley College. It's been wonderful having them aboard. The new blood is fabulous, and I think there is going to be several new upcoming Senate presidents in that batch. That was the hiring criteria. But it's wonderful to have them aboard. We want to plan our hiring so that we don't end up in the situation, because that's quite a workload crunch to hire 16 people. We're going to have retirements coming up in the future, so as part of our strategic plan, we're planning for consistent hiring across the years so that we don't get smacked with that type of hiring process. And again, thank you to HR, who did a wonderful job for everybody. Second thing I'd like to mention is that we opened our new BST building, which has been wonderful. The classrooms are fabulous. You have to come by and look at them if you haven't seen them. They're absolutely fabulous. And it's really improved the climate dramatically when you're sitting in a nice air-conditioned classroom. There's space for all the students and all the technology works. I don't happen to be in one of those classrooms, but I've heard about them. But it's wonderful. So thank you. And thank you to Craig Justice. He had to put together all of these moves. So it sounds pretty easy to just move into a new building, but when you're moving into a new building, you're moving out of old space. That old space has to be refurbished and planning has to go into who's going into those spaces. And it's like a giant domino effect. One domino slips and somebody's out teaching in the quad. So Craig did a really great job in putting that all together. The second thing is, is that we're putting to bed, finally, the accreditation report. The i's are being dotted, the t's are being crossed. And it feels like a 30-year-old child that is living at home without a job. It needs to move on. And we're getting to that, we're getting to that stage right now. On the horizon, however, September 25th, Jack Pond from the Accrediting Commission will be on campus to conduct a training for the 2010 self-study. So I don't know if you're available, President Wagner, from nine to three on September 25th. I'm joking. But now we're starting the next, the next self-study.
Sounds like you've got another child about to move home, is what it sounds like. And from the Saddleback College Academic Senate, President Cosgrove.
Thank you. Two points. One deals with the 51.3% of faculty now onboard, putting us above the 50% rule. Again, I want to repeat that two years ago, we advised this body and the chancellor of our dangerously low full-time faculty numbers. That just puts our nose barely above the water. And we need additional full-time faculty if you want to see programs developed, online development further than we have currently gone. If you want to see excellence in the classroom, and if you want to see hundreds of committees taken and fully embraced by faculty, we need more full-time faculty members. And if you want sound accreditation, it's vital. Because if part-time faculty is such a good idea, then what's wrong with part-time administration? We'd see very quickly what would happen at both colleges and at the district. The second point is our accreditation. We are moving rapidly along. The rapid response teams are making great strides. We had a report today from Morgan Burrows on recommendation three, the SLOs. An enormous number has been turned in. She'll have the official tally tomorrow, but it will not be a complete 100% at this point. But we have a second plan to try to push to embrace that and to complete it. On recommendations five and six, by the end of the week, as Dave Lang, as I think indicated, we will have probably five wrapped up pretty well and then be tackling recommendation six.
Thank you. And thank you for your work on that accreditation process. I know it has been an enormous job for you and for trustee Lang, and thank you, seriously. And to the Faculty Association, Professor Hagerty.
Thank you, President Wagner. I'd just like to reiterate some of the comments that were made earlier in regards to our students and enrollment increases. I've met with my classes, this is second day. My experience is all my classes are filled, they're standing room only, and there's need for additional classes to serve our student need. Very glad to announce that we are back in the BGS building, faculties, students, administration, staff, because we've been spread around myself from the math science building to the village, to the library. It's a good feeling to be back in a stable situation. The building looks good and everyone seems to be very happy with the work that was done to restore that building. It's very, very exciting to be teaching political science at this point with the presidential election year, the Democratic National Convention. This week, Republican National Convention. Next week, it's a great opportunity for a teaching experience. So as a political scientist, I'm encouraging my students to watch both the Democratic National Convention, Republican National Convention, and encourage them to get involved, register the vote and participate in this upcoming election. So we're looking forward to this school year. Things are very, very exciting, and we think we're going to have a good time as far as our serving needs of our students this school year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's move down to this end of the table, and we have a report from the Police Officers' Association.
First, I'd like to introduce myself. I saw the chancellor and the president have a little difficulty with my last name.
You noticed, I'm sorry.
I was paying attention. That's okay. My name is Bo Arbuthnot. I'm the vice president.
Say it again slower.
Bo Arbuthnot. Arbuthnot is the last name.
Thank you.
Again, it is a extreme pleasure to be here representing the POA. We look forward to working with the board and also the staff members and other unions so that we can continue a wonderful relationship with you all. And that's pretty much all I have to say. And again, thank you for having me, and it's a great opportunity to be before you all and continue, like I said, our relationship.
You're welcome. Thank you. Ms. Williams?
First of all, I would like to thank Dr. Burnett and his assistant, Sophie Miller, for a terrific classified breakfast last Friday. It got our year off to a really good start. While Wendy was talking about having her t's crossed and her i's dotted at the rate we've been working lately, I think it's my i's that are crossed and my t's that are dotted. But we're looking forward to a really positive accreditation report. We're making great progress. And I'd like to thank and commend Don Boucher, who's representing the district, and Dave Lang, who's representing the board on our committee. While we're going to write a very positive report, I think Dave has had to develop a thin skin because he's taken all of our frustration and taken it with a smile. The, I noted the comment that the 50% is at 51% plus, and I'd like to encourage the board to give the faculty a nice big raise so that there's plenty of room left in the 50% to hire some of us denominator people, because we certainly could use the classified staff. We've noted the crazy parking situation. I think it's encouraging some of my colleagues to work through lunch, not because we have so much work to do, but because there's no point in moving a car once you've got it into a parking spot. And with the way the summer has gone, I'd like to be the first to take this opportunity to wish you a happy holidays, because it's going to be here before we know what yet is.
Thank you. And on behalf of CSEA? Who's at one house?
Mary, G. and I and Don Main went to conference two weeks ago, which was in Las Vegas. It was a CSEA conference that they put on one-two-year, oh, sorry. Had a good time, learned a lot. It was a little, not as exciting as it usually is because there weren't a lot of resolutions and there weren't any elections or anything, but we learned a lot. And G. and I won a little money. And Mary walked herself all over Las Vegas.
Didn't win any money?
And didn't win any money, but it was a good trip. I also have to agree with President Rockmore as far as the hustle and bustle on campus at IVC. It has just, just in the two days of the semester has been awesome. When I started 24 years ago, there were four buildings on campus and maybe 1,500, 2,000 students. And it is just awesome to see the buildings up and the people going from class to class. It's really exciting to see that. Also, Mary and I have met with Dr. Bougaye, actually, this morning, and we have set up our calendar to meet with him on a regular basis to take care of issues that come up before they get really bad. And we have our first negotiating session with him tomorrow, and we're confident we're going to come out with a contract tomorrow. So that's about it, we're hoping.
Agreed. And President Dixon?
Oh, thank you. Classified Senate at IVC is, just excited about the new semester, our fall semester. It is fantastic. It is wonderful seeing all the students and helping them. Our facilities and maintenance department has been awesome, especially with the new building, cleaning everything, the grounds inside the buildings, putting furniture in the new buildings, making sure everything, technology, everything is set up. That department is awesome. Our police officers have been fantastic these first couple of days with the traffic that we have had at the circle and trying to get the students to go to the parking lots that are available, because we do have parking, but everybody wants, of course, to park in the first, you know, couple of lots. Anyway, we're excited about the fact that our numbers are up, our enrollment is. Anyway, we're excited about the fact that our numbers are up, our enrollment is, is up, and I think it's probably up a little more than Saddleback's. That's okay, we average it out, we'll take a little more in average. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Let me turn to Trustee Williams.
Well, we don't do this very often, but I'd like to move the meeting, be adjourned in memory, of Dr. T.A. Ross, Mission Viejo's first family doctor. He came to Orange County or South Orange County in 1969. My family saw him for many years. He was a founder, co-founder of Mission Hospital. He was the first chief of staff at Mission Hospital. He delivered babies, he performed appendectomies, tonslectomies, you name it, he did it. He passed away about three weeks ago. His, his real name was Thurl A. Ross, known to Chris, known by Chris to his friends. So I would move that we adjourn the meeting in name of Dr. Ross. And if you need information about him, if you've seen him before as a patient, go to the website of Oso Family Medical Group, and they'll link you to a bio on Dr. Ross. Okay, that's it.
Well done, and thank you, sir. We stand adjourned.